Tuesday, March twenty first. What is today's year? Twenty twenty three. Meeting of the Winchester Planning Board. Um, we are being recorded tonight, but oh, no, wait, I have to hit the record button. Sorry. Hold on.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I'm gonna do that all over again. Welcome everyone to the uh. March twenty first, twenty twenty three Winchester Planning Board meeting. We are being recorded both on Wind Cam. Thank you, Wind Cam. And via Zoom. Um, we do have a quorum this evening, so I'm going to do a roll call vote. And we're gonna start with our newest member, Carrie Layton. Just say present.
Present.
Excellent. Um Sally Dale.
Present.
Uh. People keep joining. They're moving around. Nick Rosettos.
Present.
E Ching Scott.
Present.
And the abjurious says present as well. Um, we are joined this evening with our um. Recording secretary Nancy Polkary, as well as assistant town engineer Brian Mantor. So, uh, first off, I'd like to, uh, welcome Carrie to our board. Uh, Carrie came in, uh, at the election on Saturday. Um, and I have to admit, we were remiss last week in not saying goodbye to Kurt Spring, who's been with us a couple of years. Um. I called Kurt and I apologized and I said that we will miss him on the board, but we will be very happy to have Carrie with us. So.
Yeah, I I sort of thought we'd have that opportunity, but I I got my my dates mixed up, that it would have been, uh, we'll we'll have to just give him a shout out and, uh. You know. Uh, you know how much we appreciated him on the board.
Yeah, yeah, and we should have an ice cream social invite him to it. It's always.
That would be, well, that's another thing. It is one of the things we had the election over the weekend. And I I have to say that. I I have to say to E Ching, uh, that the, I think the highlight for me of the. Campaign trail was getting to know you better and your husband and meet your kids in person. And. I I think there's so much to be said for, uh. Things like ice cream socials and other things that may get us to. Interact on a very personal level. And I I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed that aspect of being out there on Saturday with you.
Well, um, we may get a chance to do that sooner than we would think, depending upon where the legislature is going with the extension of our remote meetings. I I have to be honest, I haven't heard, I haven't reached out to town council to see what's going on at the legislative level. But, um. I have heard from another source that things are moving, um, but I don't know. Um, what that means, how fast they're moving. So, um. I have a few updates I wanted to get to today. Uh, we have, as usual, a tight. Packed schedule. Um, so the first thing I want to note. Is to let you in on what happened with the, uh, Town Planner Search Committee meeting last week. Uh, it was. Uh. The five of us, uh, Sally, uh, the chairs of the Designer Review Committee, Ellen Spencer. Chair of Housing Partnership, John Sebier, and Chair of Historical Commission, Jette Menager, met, and I was the other. One in that cohort. We met on Wednesday. We had seven applications that we reviewed. Um. There were a number of interesting candidates. Uh, we voted unanimously to advance a single candidate forward. Uh, we felt that that person, this person. Uh, Kelly Lenema had the. By far the best, the most experience that was, um, related to what our town needs. And there were some of the other candidates were promising, but they just didn't have the level of experience. In the field or with the particulars that we require in Winchester. So. Um, we didn't advance them. So. The, uh, Kelly is the Assistant Director of Planning at the town of Arlington. Um, and her resume is in the packet that you see before you tonight. Uh, the next step in this process is to get the interviews going. Um. So we'll try to get those done as soon as possible. There are two sets of interviews. One of them is in Town Hall with the Town Hall staff. And I'm hoping that we could have that one. Oh, then the other interview. Uh, is with the boards and that's in your packet this evening. You'll see there's that description of our process. Um, that that's not, that's probably new, not, shouldn't be new to anyone except for Carrie. And so the next step is a set of pro- public interviews, and I'm hoping that we can have the Town Hall interviews first. So that we can get their, um, reactions and responses, uh, when we, um. Have the boards interviews. So. I know that the Town Hall interview can't take place until next week because some of the people. In Town Hall are out, so I will figure out when that happens. I'll work with Suzanne Gill, our administrative assistant, to schedule that. Um, that will happen during the daytime at Town Hall. And then, um. I'm hoping that the interview before the boards will actually be in person. At Town Hall. I think it's really important that we meet with, uh. Our candidate in person. Uh, there will be ten people at the table, so. Uh, please, when I send out the requests, please try to be really flexible because getting ten people around the. Single table is sometimes challenging. So that's the update on the Town Planner. Um. Let's see, there is a, um, an emergent housing opportunities forum. That is being sponsored by the Housing Coalition, Winchester Housing Coalition, the Winchester Housing Partnership Board. And the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust. That'll take place at May eleventh at the Jenks and, uh. They would like someone from the Planning Board to discuss ADUs with them. And I believe Sally has, um. Signed up for that, so.
Right, um, I understood, um, from Felicia, who reached out to me that E Ching had, um. Uh, said she spoke at the last one and wanted to step back for this one, but if you would rather do this, E Ching, I'm happy to had to yield to you.
I, this is the first time I've heard about it, so I, um, like, understand more.
Well, I would be very happy to to have you speak there. You spoke at the last event.
Yeah, I'll talk to Felicity and see what the, um. What, what, what's on the docket, but yeah, I, I'm happy for you to speak about it too, but I.
Well, I put it in my calendar, and if it comes to the time and it's all piled up in your life, I couldn't be your understudy.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, at some point, we do have to, um. Make a motion that we want you, one of you to, to speak for the planning board. Um, and let's, we have until May the eleventh, so I think we can do that at another date.
What is the, what's the group that we're speaking to?
Uh, it's going to be a public forum at the Jenk Center. And it's gonna be, part of it is about, um. What are the, what, what sort, what sort of, um, housing opportunities are opening up?
Right, right.
So there'll be, uh, people will be talking about, um. There'll be a representative from, uh, the two. Forty Bs that are gonna be coming online probably this fall and then talking about the. Um, the local preference and the, um, the lottery. Um, we're gonna be talking about the ADUs. We have. The billing department has been getting a number of. Uh, requests for information about the ADUs, so this is something people are looking forward to doing. So. Um, having someone from the planning board there talking about the process and eligibility requirements would be great. And I don't have a flyer from the, um, for this. Yet, I will have it at our next meeting, hopefully, that I can put up on the screen. Um, so that's gonna be a public thing. Um. Let's see, um, I really quickly, oh, shoot, I'm already over. Um. When is our, where's our agenda? Huh, sorry, I think I've blown our, our, our agenda.
Do you want me to share a screen? I can do that.
Oh, we have seven thirty. Okay, I need to give time. Yeah, please.
You have to, you have to make me.
Oh, this way, I do have to do that, don't I? I was planning on doing that earlier.
He has to give you the power.
Give you the power. Make the co-host. Um, the other thing is that. Um, part of the MBTA three A process is the, uh, the CHAPA group has been, um, setting up. Meetings between cohort communities to talk about outreach. And so the initial meeting of that was last week and, uh. John Sebier from Housing Partnership Board and I attended. Sally missed that. We're gonna, she's hopefully gonna join us at the next one. Um, and our cohort communities at the moment are Concord, Redding. Milton. Oh, shoot.
Yeah, I I saw it.
Rain Tree, and I think, I don't think it's Newton.
Did you say Redding?
Yeah, sorry, um, it's in my notes somewhere. I don't have time to look at them. Uh, so we're, so we're, the, the key is to, how do we? How do we, um, do public outreach to communities? Every community is different. Um, some communities have a much higher, um, bar to get over than we do in terms of, um. Getting this past town meeting or past whatever their municipality setup is. So, um. Now I've lost where I was. Um. So that's, that, that was last week. Um, Sally, you wanted to talk about outreach?
Right, um, so Carol Savage, who is from the Communication Study Committee. And I, um, went to be mentors at one class of the high school civics class. Um, and I had reached out to the teacher of that class, whose name is Anne Marie Eden Hoffner, um, last year. Um. In connection with the Communication Study Committee, I forget what the actual question was. At any rate, um, Carol spoke about, um, how they can promote their idea to get a grant. And I spoke about citizen engagement. And provided them with a handout that I sent to E Ching, if you want to put it on the screen, and the last link on the handout. Um, is a link to a YouTube video that Carol Savage produced about existing communications channels. In, um, yeah, that's that civic engagement thing right there. Existing communications channels in Winchester, and I just. Had a quick look at that, um, document, and we can loop back to, I did screenshots of Carol's presentation, and we can loop back to that. At a later date. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to give you a quick update on is that I went on Sunday to. The Citizen Planner, uh-oh, no blurs.
Good luck.
Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. Annual Day of Workshops. And it was really cool, and it turns out that this is the American Planner Association. Doing business as, I saw that on my receipt, the Citizen Planner Trading Collaborative. And it was a day-long series of workshops, as you can see from the busy schedule that you can't read. I went to a workshop, uh, that was presenting three, three developers that specialize in small-scale, all affordable housing development. And I went to a workshop on, um, that was presented by an attorney on drafting zoning amendments, um, but he. Took too many questions and didn't get through his speaking, so I could have gotten more. Um, and there was also a really good session on master plan implementation committees, which I will share with, um. Everybody, including Rich. Um, at some point in the near future. Those are my updates.
Excellent, thank you. Um. So now let us, um, if there are no other updates to keep on session, on, on session. On schedule, uh, we have a couple of meeting minutes to go through. Um, so if you could bring those up, please. So the first one is for Tuesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Um. Are there any comments or corrections on this one?
I just have one minor, um, correction. It's, it occurs twice. It's on page two and again on page. You know, so on page one and again on page two. On page one, under number two ZBA petitions. Um, and it says, Mr. Grady, colon, the architect and. Representing the petition, and I wondered if there was a word missing. Mr. Grady, the architect and.
Hmm.
So we can just loop back to Nancy or. About that, and it occurs again, um, on page three. Under the Mystic Valley Parkway discussion under Mr. Leaf. The architect and, maybe it's just spokesperson. We just take out and and say the architect representing the petitioners. Maybe that's what she meant.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
So I don't have any other edits than that. They're very minor.
Okay, uh, anything else?
No.
Then I would welcome a motion. To, oh, approve the meeting minutes. If you could scroll back to the top, please, E Ching, because I can never remember. Uh, to approve the movements for Tuesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote. Carrie, you get to vote, uh, abstain on this one.
Carrie got signed in, sworn in.
I'm sworn in, but she wasn't in the meeting.
Yeah, so Carrie.
Abstain.
Uh, Sally.
Um, I.
Oh, I should say the motion is to approve this with. As corrected, okay, so, um. Yeah, Nick.
I.
E Ching.
I.
And Dea Bzai, I mean, is here. It's, oh my lord. And I did have caffeine today. Um, the next one is, uh, meeting minutes for Tuesday, March seventh, twenty twenty three. Any comments or corrections?
I have none.
Okay, hearing none, I would welcome a motion to approve the meetings. Meeting minutes for February twenty third.
So moved.
Twenty three. And is there a second? I'm sorry, this is March seventh.
Our seventh, not so moved, March seventh.
Okay.
Moved.
Second. Um. Roll call, Carrie.
Abstain.
Sally.
I.
Nick.
Abstain.
Um, E Ching.
Hi.
And the abse's I as well. So there we go. Okay, I think those are red for those. Uh, we now have, uh, election of officers, uh. We will, um, be looking at, so we have, we have the two officers, which is the chair and the vice chair slash clerk. And we also have, um, liaisons to town communities, boards, et cetera, and we will. Um, be doing that, um. Probably at our next meeting, and I realized I did not send out the list of boards to everyone, so I will make sure that goes out. Um, but so, uh, nominations for chair and vice chair. Shall we begin with chair?
So I've only been on these, this, um. Board for two years and I, you know, I've only seen maybe one example of chair and vice chair, so is there like a job description? Is there?
That's a good question, E Ching. I have been keeping notes for three years on what the chair does. And, um, I can. Um, mind that, but there is not a job description for chair, vice chair, clerk, and member. And right when I was running to be on the planning board, thinking that we were going to face stiff competition and a hefty campaign, E Ching. Um, I. Found online a job description for the Ogden'sburg, New York Planning Board Member. And it's the closest thing I've ever seen to a planning board description, a member, member job description. Um, but the answer to your question is no.
Okay, so you're, you're kind of making it up as you go along.
Right, it's, I call it conjugating the verb to wing it. Wing, wang, wang.
Well, I, I, I would say that we, we try to follow in the footsteps of those who come before us.
Right, Dea, I, no, I should not say wing it. You, you are, you are experienced in your role.
I'm experienced in winging it, so, um.
I, I, I would just say that I think we have two very capable, um. Chair and vice chair. And they seem to be doing a good job.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, I, I should let you know that. Well, I appreciate that. All I'm gonna say is the last several months without a town planner have been really difficult. And I really don't wish this job on anyone at the moment, but, um, that's just. Um, anyway, was that a nomination, Nick?
Uh, perhaps, sure, yes.
Okay, is this, does anyone else wish to nominate anyone or themselves?
I would agree with Nick that, um, that you guys have done a phenomenal job for such a, um, short, short, um. Labor, I mean, just, so, so much work for so little. I bandwidth, I guess, and so I, I really appreciate both of you so much for the past many months. Um, but I, I also know that Sally, you, you, um. Been wanting to chair, so I, um, and I appreciate Dea having chaired for the past two years. Um, so I mean, I, I. I would nominate you too, Sally, for chair, um, and Dea.
That's very nice. I, I can speak to that, um, and Dea and I talked about this, um, that especially with Brian out. Not out, Brian's, yeah, when's he coming back? No, with Brian's position empty, it's especially challenging, and the fact that. I said a year ago in this very same meeting that I would like to be the chair this year, um. Just says I didn't know what I didn't know.
It's the circle of ignorance.
Right, so I am, I am perfectly happy with the dynamic of productivity and, and covering each other. That Dea and I have, um, and, um, I'm thrilled to re, to welcome Carrie. To the board. Um, there's an amazing amount of subjects in front of us and work associated with them. It's astonishing.
So would you guys accept nomination for co-chair?
Uh, I would accept a nomination for co-chair. And Dea, you would accept a nomination for chair, would you not?
I would.
I would second, uh, the nomination of Sally for co-chair.
Okay, um, we have, I think, you know. However, this is as official as it's going to get. I.
Yeah.
So why don't we have a, a round of voting? Uh, Carrie, did you wanna speak up and say anything?
Well, I think I, I don't have enough experience. I mean, I, I know both of you from, you know, outside of the planning board, and I trust your leadership, and it seems like you have. The confidence of, you know, fellow board members, so I will, I will vote with the majority here.
Okay. Um, so why don't we, uh, so why don't we vote for, um, vice chair first? Um, so the nomination is for Sally Dale, so. Um, why don't we just do a roll call on that? Nick?
I.
E Ching.
I.
Carrie.
I.
Sally.
I.
And Dea says I as well, and then we'll vote for chair, and the nomination is for me, and I accept that nomination, so roll call vote. Um, let's go in reverse order. Uh, I don't think that's possible. Sally. Sally.
I.
E Ching.
I.
Carrie.
I.
Nick.
I.
And I will say I as well. So I, I want to point out that we can revisit this decision at any point. And I, I certainly, I, I, I really appreciate the confidence that you've. Put in me, um, and I, I do want you to know that I really, um. I'm hoping this will be my last year as chair. I, I think it's really important that the chair rotate. And, you know, if in six months people feel like, um, if someone feels like they are ready to, um, to come in as chair. I'm more than happy to go through this process again. Um, it's, it's really important that everyone on the board gets the experience, I think, of, of doing all of the, uh. Doing all of this, gives you very different insight as to what's possible and what's not.
Well, and maybe between now and six months from now, I can actually. Make some sense out of my scribble notes about all the things that I see that the chair has to do.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, at this point, why don't we, we're only four minutes late this evening. We're doing really well. Uh, so we have, um, the first thing on our agenda is, or the next thing on our agenda. Is, uh, our conversation with, uh, Josh Fiala from the Metro Policy and Area Planning Commission. Uh, to discuss, um, so Josh is gonna. Lead us on a, uh, he's gonna give us a presentation, and we're gonna have a discussion on what's happening with the Light Industrial District, which is the. As we now call it, uh, the Holton Swanton Cross. Um, study, and, uh, we are having a public forum on that. Coming up in April. April fourth, and so we are gonna hear from Josh, and then we're gonna brainstorm how we can do some marketing. And so Josh, do you, you need to get control, don't you?
Yes, Chair, sharing the screen would be wonderful.
Yeah. Oh, and I should, I should have asked, um, yeah. One of the things a lot of people do when they go into meetings, they ask how people want to be called, so. I did not ask how you wanted to be called Josh, so I'm just gonna call you Josh.
Josh is fine, thank you.
Uh, and I'm Dea, but I'm not chair. Chair is a piece of furniture, so. Okay, uh, it's all yours, Josh. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. All right, so good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. Um. Going to give you a preview of the, the plan in terms of content for the meeting, which Dea just mentioned. On April fourth, which is a community forum, uh, focused on the Holton Cross Swanton industrial areas. In the town, um, and hope to get your feedback this evening to, um, refine the content. So, uh, this is, this follows along the. Order and sort of content of what will be presented at that session, but it has been shortened some for our purposes this evening. Um, in that meeting, I do plan to do a bit of a reintroduction to what the study is all about, which I'm not gonna give to you all this evening. You're a little more familiar with it. But the idea is that, uh, it has been, uh, a few months or more than a half a year, perhaps, since our last community. Meeting on this project, so we'll need to, um, re, re, um, introduce and get people acquainted with this work again. Uh, we have a, a summary of the community feedback that was gathered at that last session and a, um, community survey which followed. And then the focus of our presentation in that meeting will be to outline some initial recommendations, which we'll be hoping to gather feedback on. Uh, that evening, and then also have a follow-up survey to do the same. So just a little bit of background in terms of that community feedback, so that last community meeting was back in June, uh, twenty eighth of the. Previous summer, twenty twenty two. We had about, uh, twenty attendees, and then. The community survey got about the same amount of responses, somewhere around, uh, between thirty-five and forty responses and participants providing feedback in total. Most of those were residents of the area. And then we have also, uh, followed up with some additional inter stakeholder interviews, which included. Residents as well, but then also touched base with, uh, business and property owners along. Um, Cross Street, Lowell Avenue, Holton Street, um, and others. So it was good to get, uh. Both feedback from both sides in terms of businesses and residents in that area. And we're talking about, uh, the topics of a vision for the area, uh, thoughts on specific uses and future uses in. In these, uh, industrial districts, and then, um, thoughts about how development might occur and the characteristics of that development. Here's a little bit more on the stakeholder interviews, um, about ten in total. Um, and again, a balance between, uh, both sides of those stakeholder users in the area. Um, I would say that there was a pretty, um, significant difference in opinion about what sort of is. What the dynamics are that are occurring there between the feedback from residents and the feedback from property owners. Uh, as you might recall, when we went over the feedback with the planning board, I think in November, we, I came before you and provided a presentation. The feedback from the residents is more focused on, uh, reducing impacts, improving traffic, walkability. Using the area as sort of almost a recreational area in many regards, and some of those uses. Um, which would be, of course, consistent with what a resident might like to see. Um, the business owners, uh, their concerns. Don't overlap much with that. Their concerns are primarily about, um. Operating their business, the, the logistics that are needed to do so, um, trying to be a good neighbor, but also at the same time not. Face unnecessary restrictions to their activities, um, and. You know, basically just try to make their businesses work. That's, that's the approach. Um, and that makes sense from their perspective, and so what you might gather is from those, those two very impersonal. varying perspectives, that there is, is occasionally some friction that might occur uh, between those two sets of stakeholders. Also among the uh, stakeholders interviewed was a discussion with the Director of Planning in the City of Woburn, which I thought was also very informative and instructive about the similar dynamics that they're facing across the, the town line.
I just had a quick question. Uh, will, uh, will you be sharing a a refresher map just to remind me or us of the geographical area that we're, that we're speaking at some point in the presentation?
Yes, I do have a map slide in the.
I mean, that can wait, but I just, I, I just wanted to make sure I had a firm grasp on the geographical area.
Yes, good point. It, it's uh, it's squarely in the slides, which I cut out of this.
Sure, sure.
So it is, it is in the intro reintroduction part. Um, so, but I do think we still have, I still have a map graphic and a couple of slides for you.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things I, I, I do wanna reiterate too, and we'll re- re- reiterate with the community, is that this is a implementation effort from the town's townwide master plan. Uh, and was identified, this study was identified as a follow-on effort and is an important part of that process. So um, this falls under the category in terms of the master plan of balancing development with preservation. The um, and I've added some yellow boxes as, as a point of sort of emphasizing and isolating certain language here, which we're gonna pull out on a separate slide. But the idea here is that we're encouraging more commercial mixed use and compact development in areas that support economic vibrancy in the town. And looking at, this was identified, these areas as a, an evolving opportunity area in the master plan's language. So some specifics about what could, what could occur here, again, what I've highlighted in yellow, I think, are some of the operative phrases. So increasing the value of the non-residential tax space for the town, strategically responding to the market, creating more cohesive neighbor, neighborhood buffering, um, more predictability, reduce instances of competing forces of the type I just described a little bit in the preamble. Um, and then focusing on synergies with Woburn industrial area, strengthening transportation connections, um, and the like. So this is, I think we're, we're being very consistent with, with what was outlined in the master plan and just highlighting this language that you can see those consistent threads through the, the work that's continuing. Here, here's all those yellow phrases which were highlighted on those previous slides directly from the master plan language as quotations. So um, the, these are really the guideposts which we're trying to stay within or, or let, let um, uh, influence and emphasize our work. Uh, and hopefully, uh, we remain consistent with this as, as we continue to gather feedback from you all as a board and from the community as well. So just getting straight into some of the initial recommendations to use our time most productively this evening. Um, they come in a few forms, so I, I have drafted a vision statement, which I think builds upon the feedback we've heard. Do have some ideas around refinements to the zoning boundaries of which, uh, in those, in that discussion, the map will show up. So we'll get a little refresher on the geography there. Um, some discussion about the uses in those zones, the dimensional regulations, potential suggestions around guidelines, um. Other rules and regulations outside of the zoning bylaw and discussion around what that might, might mean. And then there's been a lot of focus from the residents, of course, around street and traffic improvements. And then lastly, talking about coordination and collaboration with the City of Woburn. So just, I, you know, planners love matrix, matrices, so I put all these various quotations from the master plan, which are our guideposts and the various um, components of the initial recommendations into this table. And then tried to think through where, where the various components and recommendations are applying to those operative quotes and phrases from the master plan language. And you can see, I think it's a pretty well-rounded um, collection where we are hitting on the points that were addressed in the master plan. So from a, a vision statement standpoint, this I think gets to that, the, the balance, which we're really trying to strike between what the residents say, uh, this area could need in terms of its improvements. And then also what the businesses might require in terms of still operating and, and functioning as uh, productive uh, in sort of a, a solid form of tax revenue for the town. So the, the statement goes on that, that the Holton Street, Cross Street and Swanton Street areas of Winchester are home to limited light industrial zoning districts. This area has historically always been an industrial area in the town. The aisle districts continue to create value, opportunity, jobs, services and amenities for Winchester. The aisle district should retain future flexibility to support a non-residential base in a predominantly residential town. So as you all know, that this is, this is one of the areas of the town where these other types of uses can occur. And, and that's unique uh, within the town's overall zoning and land use today. The second paragraph continues. Over time, residential uses and less industrial businesses have also begun to call these aisle districts home. Business-friendly policies and investments should be used to help this eclectic mix of uses coexist in such a way as to reduce conflicts so that all uses can safely thrive together. All uses will benefit from improved roadway infrastructure that helps all forms of travel to safely coexist, including freight and passenger vehicles and pedestrians and bicycles. Yes, D E B, you have a comment.
You're immune.
Thank you. Uh, the word industrial has so many meanings. And I know it says limited light industrial. And I know that's what it is in our zoning, but I have a feeling that most people don't really understand what that word means in connection with what's going on in those areas. So is that I think that we need to introduce the kind of things going on there. And is that something that comes later in this presentation or in before the vision? I'm just, I don't know. It has to go somewhere, I think. So that was my only comment.
That's a good comment. Um, I think we could, it would do, do us well to maybe unpack that phrase a little bit and not just have all the ideas which fall within the word industrial be represented by just that word, but maybe pull that word apart a little bit into a phrase. Um, and we did have, I, I will, we did have a slide in terms of the composition of businesses in the district. And I can reintroduce that slide in the intro. I think that would be helpful. All right, so uh, moving on from this overall vision statement, and this, I think what you'll see, the vision statement, I think, is consistent with the other more specific recommendations. But I always, I think it's nice to try to give some language which would frame for the town and for you all as a, as the board or others um, to, if there are specific recommendations or issues which show up in the future, to give you a little bit of guidance to try to weigh those um, issues against rather than, you know, being completely silent on it. I think you could, um, if, you know, for example, I don't know, some sort of issue around a, a use that's not contemplated today, but is in the future, you could weigh that use against this statement and maybe get a little bit um, additional guidance from, from a statement such as this.
Right.
Um, a little bit of, this isn't specific necessarily to the uses in the district as D E B was suggesting. But this is a little context around the market, uh, again, in that term industrial uses in the, the region. And Winchester's a part of that, those dynamics, of course. But over, over the past ten years, the region has been losing light industrial space. So space for um, manufacturing or um, fabrication of various kinds or storage or whatever the case may be. Over that time, since the space has been reducing, vacancy rates have also been decreasing and rents have been increasing. So you, you're seeing, uh, those are all related, of course. There's less space to be vacant, so the vacancy rates are decreasing. And since there's less space available generally and that there's a lot of demand for it, the rents are increasing. Um, regardless, as a, a land use, the valuation of industrial uses is still much lower than other types of land use, for example, residential land uses in the, the greater Boston area. So these industrial areas are seeing continued pressure for conversion from industrial to other more valuable types of land uses. So that's, that's a pretty consistent story and what that dynamic is. So you see, um, industrial districts are not growing. They're shrinking through encroachment by other uses. Uh, and that's what the dynamic is and was described by the City of Woburn as well, that they're, they're losing industrial space in the city just north of you through these dynamics. Many times that industrial space is being lost to residential use. The um, economic output nonetheless across the Commonwealth is stronger and highest than, you know, almost in its entire history relative to manufacturing in the state. Um, and many of those businesses are smaller, family-run sort of uh, family legacy businesses. So ten or fewer, uh, bit, ten or fewer employees, they're, they're good-paying jobs that don't require ha- higher education in many cases. But um, are, are, you know, very good jobs for uh, the amount of experience or, or education required to, to get them. Um, and in general, I would say this isn't, you know, an adjacent resident may disagree, but in general, the uses are less impact-producing in terms of noise, odor or pollution or environmental contaminants than they used to be in the past. Uh, did I go backwards? Um, just a second. Oh, sorry, I did go backwards. All right. The uh, zoning boundary is uh, the first thing to address. And this is, um, the zoning boundary, I think, is a way to impact uh, and strike this balance which we're seeing, which is needed between the residential considerations and the business considerations. And so the approach that we're having is to actually reduce the current industrial boundaries to better reflect the evolution of land uses. Many uses of a more commercial nature are already in place in the industrial district. So we can adjust the district to better reflect that reality today. And I think it would, um, I'm hoping that the residents would see that as an improvement overall because the future use in some of these districts would be more headed in a commercial direction, which it's already, it's already there. But the, in terms of future change, it couldn't go back to industrial, which I think in some areas that I'll point out would be um, uh, in, you know, encouraged by the residents surrounding residential users. Um, and then that would allow us, if we kind of pull those pieces which have already been encroached upon or converted over time, uh, would allow us to focus on the light industrial areas as more, more core areas for the rest of the um, recommendations. So let me get to my, my map. I don't know why that keeps going backwards like that. I'll try not to push that button again. Um, all right, so here, here's the area. Um, all the, the parcels which show up here in a color are what we are focused on. Sorry, it's not Nick as, it's a little abstract as a map, but you, you hopefully will get the idea that.
Is it, it, so they're non-contiguous? Is that what we're saying?
Right.
Yes, that's correct. So along Swanton Street, you see, if you can see my cursor here, there's a collection of uh, parcels in the limited industrial. Then along River Street, there's some parcels tucked in that are.
McKay River?
Yeah.
I can't read some of the others, uh, but.
Long Lowell, Lowell Avenue, there's a industrial condominium. Uh, and then along Holton Street, both uh, up, I think is that uh, up Cross Street and East Street, is that right?
East.
So um, and then there is some along Cross Street, uh, on the east side of the underpass.
Right. That looks like Fifty Cross and then uh, where the, there's a uh, dance studio or something.
Yeah, Kid Stark.
So on, on this map, you can see that the coloration is relative to a um, a so-called industrial use, so still like a, a manufacturing-type user uh, or a construction company or um, you know, someone who's selling stone slabs, for example, like that, that type of use. Um, versus a um, more commercial use, which would be, say, a school or a swimming school or a tennis club or a theater or a fitness studio or a ballroom dance studio or residential. And so what you see in the yellow is where the, although it's today zoned limited industrial, the yellow is a use which is no longer industrial. And the purple color is still industrial. So the, the proposal, I did it again, put it that way.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, sorry. The proposal um, is to basically even out the zoning map to reflect that um, a current evolution of uses. So I'll start on Cross Street. And the idea would be on Cross Street, just um, on the north side of Cross Street, there's already a G B D one general business district. So instead of keeping those limited light industrial, the idea would be to make those parcels on the, that east portion of Cross Street, all G B D one general business, which would be much more consistent with their current use. Similarly, down on Swanton Street, we could pull some of those uh, residential uses out of the uh, light limited, in, light industrial and put them into the general residential district. On the district, the parcels which are being converted presently to a forty B project on River Street, you could put those into the adjacent R A multiple-family residential district, which would be much more consistent with what they are becoming.
Would you, would you still get to keep the industrial use at the same time you expanded to those other uses?
You, if an ex- if an industrial use is there, it would be grandfathered as a non-conforming use. So it would, it would not impact any industrial use which would get um, potentially caught up in that change. The difference would be that if, if and when that property wants to sell or change to something in the future, it would then change to also a multiple-family residential use or a general business-type use. It would no longer have the option to become a new limited industrial use.
Okay, but we, we'd be able to keep the industrial status if they already had it?
Yes, if, if they are currently a light industrial user, they can operate and, you know, improve their building. They can do all, all the things they need to do to continue running their business.
Right, so they could run a, you know, a, I don't know, machining outfit and, but they, but what you're saying is that they can do that, but we can expand it so that now they can do general business in addition to light industrial.
No.
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, no, I think, I think that's not what's happening. So the proposal or not, not what is proposed to happen. So the proposal that I'm, I'm putting forward is that where we would make this change, you would no longer, like, the zoning would change so that the uses that are allowed would be the general business uses, for example, not the limited light industrial uses. It's, it would be a different, the only, the difference I was describing earlier is if there's a business owner who is currently operating a limited light industrial use, it would not cause them to have to shut their business down. It would just be about.
Oh, I see. And it's, it's um, uh, I'm just trying to get my arms around, uh, is, is, is it, is it necessary to abandon the light industrial um, option? Or is it just that, i- i- is it just that we think that no one's ever gonna do it? I, I'm just wondering.
I, yeah, the, what's the, what's sort of the purpose for doing this?
Right, right.
Um, I.
I mean, wouldn't we wanna have the option if someone, I mean, wouldn't we wanna make it as broad as possible? But I, but again, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm coming to this with just a part of the information, um. But, but I, I wanna get a clearer picture.
Yeah. Uh, to me, the purpose of these boundary changes are to uh, respond to what we've heard from residents. Um, and what we've heard from residents is that they, um, I guess, to just very high-level summary and sort of shorthand is that they don't love the industrial neighbors. Um, and so in, in reducing the limited industrial footprint, as you said, it's, they, they aren't contiguous as a district today and they're kind of scattered and, and surrounded by other residential uh, neighbors. By reducing that, we're hoping to preserve a core limited industrial district, which is the area along Lowell Avenue, Cross Street, East Street and Holton here.
Mm-hmm.
So that core would be where we, we're trying to focus these activities in Winchester in the future. By removing the potential, um, you know, reducing the likelihood of conflicts between these users and the surrounding residential neighborhood, I'm hoping that the other properties which are retained as limited industrial will be, will have more leeway from the same residential neighbors in the future. I'm not sure if that dynamic would play out, but uh, I'm hoping that it's, it's seen as a um, a positive trade-off.
So I, I think one of the, one of the interesting zone, areas that, that you're talking about, Josh, is the one that's right in the middle of, of the screen right now, which is the River Street one. And that, the majority of that parcel is now a six-story housing development. And so that will never go back to light and. And so that will never go back to light industrial.
That's say River Street right there between the two block, the gray boxes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
And but the area right across from that large housing development is still light industrial, but I I think that, I think it's highly unlikely you're going to get a the the land value there is so high right now because it could be turned into residential. I have a feeling there might be another forty B that would might go in there or something like that, so. And Carrie, your hand is up.
I ha- I have two questions. One is if there, i- if it, you noted that there's less pollution from these businesses than there has been historically. Are any of these sites um places where soil contamination would affect any of these translations to different property types?
Um, I don't think I have the specific knowledge enough to answer that definitively for you. I have not heard of contamination issues, but also have not looked at the records of each property.
Yeah, I had a similar question um in terms of, and and this is probably, again, something that you wouldn't have off the top of your head, but if there are any again, brownfields or toxic sites that might need remediation, and also what I I sort of getting a new appreciation for for uh, i- if there's a wetlands profile of the area.
Be on here, you don't have the Aborjona on this map.
No, it's a really perplexing map. The the big white stripe down the center is the train line, the gray amorphous shaped blob, that is the floodplain of the Aborjona.
Oh, okay. So those will be different.
And these, the properties, um, some of the properties, not all, but some of the properties in the district do flood and have historically flooded, um particularly those in the lower line areas of the Lowell Avenue industrial condominium uh reported flood issues in the past.
Right, definitely. Is that the pink up here?
That is, uh, can you guys see my cursor?
Yes, it's a little tiny line.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, right. Well, what uh where I remember flooding is the building that is the Kidstock building, which you have as G B D one now. Um, and that other little pink boot-shaped lot, that's always been flooding. But, uh, you know, the town did a ton of work in flood mitigation, tons of work. There's a multi-year master plan, it may be better.
The the hospital did as well up on the on the Washington Street site, so.
Right.
I, you know, so that's Davidson Park up there.
Yeah, the green is Davidson.
And I think that the flooding there has been dramatically reduced. Um, I I I have friends who live on one of the streets and they they luckily live on a slight knoll. And so they've watched the water come close and close and close. It hasn't done that for a while, so.
Well, what I remember from town meeting is that there was some number of houses that were actually re- removed from a federal floodplain classification because of the successful work of Winchester's flood mitigation efforts over the years. But that's moot, that's that's immaterial to this discussion. Um, so the interesting thing is the gray boxes that are um on either side of river, so that, the big River Street development is those larger buildings off to the left, the little sum of land off to the left, this off of, off of lock. When that's the old lot where the um carpet cleaning building was, and you're saying that to turn that to R A one twenty.
Correct.
And then the buildings that are there, oh yeah, so it would be all at R A one twenty, right? This this footprint of buildings is not current. And then you're saying that the buildings across the street would be given the same classification.
Correct, and those and those, that's one of the cases where it would be a grandfathered case because there are still industrial users on the east side of River Street. That would be a, become, if this were to, this direction were to be carried through, would become a non-conforming use.
Uh, and a a grandfathered, yeah, each thing, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't wanna interrupt your proposal too much, but I, from what I understand here, Josh, it, are you, are you at the middle of your proposal, or are you sort of, this is, this is the proposal?
No, this is, this is sort of the the start, actually, so we should.
So I don't wanna interrupt too much, but my understanding is that you are reducing and tightening these um I L zones in order to get pe- people's buy-in on perhaps the purple zone being um in uh allowed to heighten and so broaden our sort of commercial base there. Is that, is that?
Yeah, that's, I think that's a, that's a good high-level summary, is that the, the idea is that we would geographically tighten up that district and then try to make it a little more permissible in the, for the, for it to be a productive uh commercial enlightened limited industrial area in the future for the town. Um, but you wouldn't be surprised by that use showing up in some other less ideal place, but they, it would be more um connected and contiguous area that that would occur in.
Got it, got it.
Uh, one question, I noticed that um the the streets of Newton Street, um Baldwin Street and Williams Court, maybe, um, are are location of dozen, more than a couple of dozen houses, according to the little gray dots. And have, did your outreach include, robustly include people from that neighborhood?
It did include. I don't know if I would use the word robustly with any of the numbers that we've in, had in this process in terms of engagement, but it did relative to, you know, you saw in the numbers that we've reached probably uh forty or so residents generally through the process.
Okay.
Had ten individual stakeholders, so included um individuals amongst those stakeholders who are on Baldwin Street. Um, perhaps another one, I think maybe it was Williams or East Street as well.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's gonna be a focus for our next outreach, so that's good. Sorry, thanks.
Were, were there any uh uh that stood out, any historic resources?
I'm sorry. Josh finished the proposal. Idea.
Right, go ahead.
All right, so I'll, yeah, I'll try to get through, just let me give you the overall look of it first. And I'll try to do it relatively quickly so we can continue the discussion. So the idea is that we would uh tighten up those districts um so that we can then focus on these additional recommendations, which would then apply to that refined zoning boundary setup, which I just described. The first would be the uses, and so we would, of course, where we're shifting the uh zoning boundary to a different zone, those uses of that zone would apply. Um, so that would be the change. Um, and then in the uh limited industrial district, we would be expanding the uses for uh future opportunities, so that would include things like artisanal manufacturing, which is a smaller scale or sort of hand-done manufacturing, professional scientific or technology uses, food and other services. Those are all sort of use categories which aren't currently allowed, which would potentially provide some new opportunities um as those properties are looking for reinvestment. These are all the uses that are allowed or not allowed. I won't dwell on this slide for too much right now. Um, but, you know, this is within the context of what what is uh being considered. Some uses would be potentially removed from the limited industrial district, which are currently allowed to focus on the manufacturing and fabrication aspects of those uses, which is what we're trying to r- retain, and to pull out some of the uses which would be maybe considered more of an encroaching or lighter commercial use. So that would be like a childcare center, um which might find better places to locate in the town in general, like perhaps downtown or in the town center. Um, a library, museum, similarly, a public park or playground. Although there's some in this area directly, you wouldn't want to introduce a new one in the center of the limited industrial district that's retained. Um, a reservation or conservation area, a bank or business office, or uh a portion of the dwelling as a home occupation. So those would be, we're we're sort of tightening up that this is an area we're we're announcing for the future, is being retained for limited industrial manufacturing, fabrication, science, technology-type uses uh in the future of Winchester. Then there would be some others which may be more on the cusp, which might be introduced either as a special permit or some of, in some cases are pretty clear and could be permitted as of right. Those might include things like creative studio space for artists or others, light manufacturing, which includes the types of things which are described there in in the quotation, um, which includes like sort of Fab Lab and Robotics Maker Space type stuff. Um, research and development in general, food production facilities, more focus on artist work studios, if that's something that artists would find desirable. And then apparel manufacturing, woodworking, or other sorts of artisanal production. So these are, so it's really just expanding the idea of what kinds of things might productively occur here that could re- relate to a future use. And I also think that these uses, while they're sort of new and different than what's allowed there today, they in many cases would have less impacts on surround residential uses than what you might think of as like a, I don't know, a a more heavier industrial or more, you know, a less light industrial user. This is a similar model as, so in one of our past meetings, we talked about what what's this place like in terms of a similar comparison? And I know that in Somerville, the notion of like Assembly Square was mentioned, and I, it's not really an Assembly Square. Um, and but it is more like if we stick on the Somerville theme, um, they have a fabrication la- or a fabrication zone in their new townwide um form or citywide form-based code, which was adopted as a um their zoning ordinance a few years back. And this district is characterized, as they put it, by large floor plate buildings up to four stories in height. Um, buildings that are set close to the sidewalk and create a defined street wall um for some, you know, sense of walkability, pedestrian activity, sense of place. But they're really buildings which are more akin to a historic mill space in many ways and just give you a large open area that you could um adjust flexibly for many of the types of uses which we saw in that previous slide. And these are the types of buildings which which they're seeing in that type of zone in that context. Some new, some old, um but that's, that's the look and feel. So I think that's, that's a a better comparison and similarity. Um, in terms of sets uses, in terms of dimensional regulations, we're, we're just trying to make them a little more flexible to help support the businesses and future investment in these properties for business uses, not residential uses or conversions. Um, and so what does that look like? It basically means reducing the minimum lot area potentially, so that you might be able to read, maybe subdivide a property and re- redevelop it a little more productively, reducing the minimum lot frontage to go along with that. Um, looking at the minimum front yard setback and reducing that or making it a a build-two area so that buildings are gonna fall within that range and and potentially have a little more relationship to the surrounding uh lot lines and sidewalk. Looking at a reduction of other setbacks as well. Um, retaining a setback to res- uh surrounding residential districts to make sure you have a strong buffer there and talking about what occurs in that buffer. Um, and then keeping the same height, uh both in terms of terms of stories and feet. Uh, I don't think there's much reason to go higher than what there is there today. Um, many of these, just as a side note, many of these users and buildings and uses don't see a need to go beyond one story because they have either heavy equipment or uh shipping and receiving needs which are required to be on the ground floor. So you're still gonna see a pressure for many of these um uses to want to be one story. And then that also also includes parking requirements, and we're generally um just trying to increase flexibility, so require less parking as a minimum and let a a property owner or developer determine what is the right fit in terms of the parking that's needed for their property without uh needlessly requiring more parking than is necessary. Uh, and that, I think, is is helpful for these users. T- typically, especially when they're a large floor plate user, so they might have a lot of square footage, but as I mentioned, not as many employees in many of these businesses. So the parking to square footage ratios might be a little off. And then to to round out those those changes uh in terms of boundary uses and dimensional standards, uh introducing some design guidelines so that the relationship between residential and non-residential users can be uh balanced out a little bit. And that would be looking at things like the orientation of the service loading and dumpster areas, which I know has been uh sometimes a contentious issue with some of the neighbors. Um, thinking about very specific requirements around screening and buffering on these properties, guidelines for curb cuts and access that you don't wanna see end-to-end property line to property line just paved over, that there should be definition of driveways and and um entry and exit points, and there should be limitations on the width of those areas and sidewalks at the, you know, at the property edges. And then looking at strengthening guidelines for landscape and streetscape as well. And then on the uh, looking beyond the zoning bylaw a little bit to other town bylaws, we heard a lot around um other regulations in town around uh noise limitations, hours of operation limitations, truck traffic or or other limitations, which are negatively impacting business operations. Um, and so we we do need to do a little more homework and research on uh discovering exactly where and what those additional regulations are. Um, and look at ways that they could per- perhaps be uh considered or modified. Um, and then looking in, I think in general, offering some parallel protections for businesses to ensure that they um can uh operate their businesses as necessary and and making sure that they, those um additional requirements aren't aren't impacting them negatively. And then we, this is probably the prom- most prominent area of feedback from the residents themselves, and it was around traffic, um, safety and uh pedestrian safety and bicycle safety, so traffic concerns were very common. Uh, they would like to see investments pursued in in terms of improving traffic, the intersection, the five-way intersection with Cross Street and Holton Street and East Street and Lowell Avenue is a difficult one, of course. Um, improving the signage and wayfinding in the district as well, things like having a welcome to Winchester sign at the the town boundary would be very helpful from the business's perspective. Um, and defining a the ho- a Holton Street Improvement Plan, working with the City of Woburn and looking at that corridor as it crosses the the town boundary, um advancing the cross-street design and improvements which have been underway, but continuing that. Thinking about how the narrowness of that underpass can be addressed um in in i- in regard to pedestrian connectivity. And then again, that intersection that I mentioned. So those are all areas which have been highlighted and aren't, can't necessarily be solved within the confines of our work here, but should be pointed to um as continuing efforts that the residents and others would appreciate. And then lastly, on collaboration and coordination, Woburn, um defining some, as I mentioned, those shared improvements along Holton Street, the majority of Holton Street is in the City of Woburn. The developing a process for nearby proposals across city and town lines so that those would be shared with one another, so that you can have a little more awareness of what's happening just north of you here. And and looking at things like the address numbering on Holton Street, I guess that's, it's relatively confusing setup for people trying to find businesses in Winchester because the numbers jump around between the two municipalities. And then a suggestion which came from the City of Woburn would be to have a a joint planning board meeting between the two municipalities and build a little more rapport between the two to to be able to share and discuss um, you know, issues that are related and and germane to both both places. So the basic idea here, in in what I think overall are relatively probably modest proposals, maybe they don't go far enough for some, but I do think would make a meaningful difference. We're trying to balance, make, strike a balance between industrial or commercial needs and the residential needs. We're hoping to make it easier and possible for businesses to do their work there while mitigating impacts to the surrounding residential users, and we did that, hopefully you see that balance through a number of the recommendations, including those boundary changes. Um, looking at improving the public realm for the benefit of all types of users and uh by doing so, reducing the impacts that each of them feel, um and then trying to reduce the pressure from encroachment by other uses over time by making the districts more compact, but also giving them new opportunities uh to hopefully uh productively use the properties into the future without other uses encroaching. I will say that this, this, these set of rec- this set of recommendations fall along a bit of a spectrum. I would describe them as a middle ground, but I think it's worth the planning board's consideration to to just name that spectrum specifically, and I think at the one end of that spectrum. at the one end of that spectrum is leaning more toward industrial uses. And so that would be what's listed here as number one, so reverse the current trend. Reduce encroachment and preserve light industrial uses as like as a motive oper- as a more of a mission within this work. That, if that is the desire of the town, I think that, that type of recommend, set of recommendations would look a little different than the ones that I've put forward this evening. What I've put forward this evening, I would describe in that middle ground as number two, which is over time, we're continuing to evolve toward lighter impact uses. And, but that we're not um completely succumbing to market forces to convert this area to residential completely, for example. And so we're, we're still trying to retain limited industrial uses, we're trying to provide productive opportunities for those to occur successfully in the future. We're trying to enhance buffers and controls to mitigate the impacts to surrounding residential users, but we are, we are still trying to balance between the two of them. The third approach would be basically to give into or let go of the desire for retaining industrial users as a base in Winchester and let market forces take over here. Which is what I think some of the residents might prefer, actually. Um, and to see less industrial almost completely over time to see allow or encourage encroaching uses. So that would be additional residential, additional commercial, um, or other types of uses. And that again would be, I think, as a composition of recommendations, a little bit different than what I have brought forward this evening. Um, it's not to say that, I, I think th- these are up for discussion and consideration by you all on the planning board and up for the town. Um, I don't necessarily think that any of them is, is a bad choice, except that I'll just put back into our mind the context that I described earlier, that light industrial s- land and zoning designated land in general is a, becoming a scarcer and scarcer resource, particularly in near, nearer in communities like Winchester. And they, they, their value will increase over time. And so, um, that's why I think striking that balance between retaining it, but still, um being friendly to the surrounding neighborhoods is, is a good approach. Um, and that's why I've struck that balance and approached as, as number two. I think to just let go of this area is, would be a loss in general in terms of the town's tax base and the ability to support these types of jobs and uh businesses in the future.
How would we do competing with Woburn right there in attracting businesses to our light industrial area? I know you're saying there's sort of a lower valuation than the residential properties, but you know, micro drive versus East Street or a block apart, but a different town. As a business owner, what would make me choose? I'm assuming Winchester's property is, is it the same cost? Is it devalued to like, or, or, do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think um it, it's a, it is a tough part of the equation. I think that in general, Woburn is um a little bit more attractive if you had, so if you had similar industrial properties in one town or the other, um, and you were choosing. Um, I think many are choosing Woburn because it's seen as a more business-friendly environment. To be honest, is what we've heard in mu- mu- many of the interviews. In some cases, there, I know of at least one um Winchester business and property owner who also leases space in the City of Woburn because the types of things they do on that property, they could not do in Winchester.
Okay, so then let's say we make the transition from light industrial to general business. Can those parcels, I, I'm assuming that, so you know, a light industrial need would require a larger parcel than a general business need, so could they then be sold in smaller parts or subdivided or would we be looking to retain those larger?
In, so if it were the conversion to GBD one, for example, yes, you would then change to the dimensional requirements of GBD one, and I believe those requirements do have a smaller minimum lot size. Um, today, the, the recommendations I put forward this evening, that conversion only occurs on that section of Cross Street and those parcels are already smaller than the parcels which are in the um IL district, which is retained if, if you follow what I'm saying there. So they, I don't think you would see sort of a, a further reduction of those properties along Cross Street which would convert. Um, just because they're already about that size.
Gotcha, okay, great. Thank you.
To follow up on what Carrie is saying, so the question arises, which type of property is going to be more valuable in the future? The light industrial or the general business in terms of attracting people?
Well, y- you would balance the answer to that question against um the sentiment of the town, which is to um decrease the dependence on residential property taxes, and we know from the MAPC study that it would be an enormously huge set of buildings to meaning, in, in any meaningful way, shift the burden off of the, the residential tax base to the commercial. So um, the will of the town is, is not served by reducing the industrial space.
Well, I was actually, my, my question was, was in a slightly different direction, which was um, if we want to attract use, if we wanna revitalize this area, let's say, do we do better? Will we attract more people by moving to a, a general business district? Or will we attract more um businesses by, you know, coming up with a sort of a, a version three point O of light industrial?
I don't know how you would tell. I mean, it all gets down to the list of uses.
Well, that's why I'm asking Josh, cuz my, my other question was, when, when you came up with that list of suggested uses that we could add, is, does, is that list reflective of what the um, the broader uh manufacturing is moving into, where you see this is what modern manufacturing Massachusetts is like?
Yeah, I think it, I think it does. Um the, in part, those uses were recommendations from a light industrial industry report. Um so, those, I, I think that, that is true. In terms of the GBD one versus IL sort of question, I, I don't think the parcels which we're proposing be retained as IL, I don't think are well configured or positioned for to be sort of a neighborhood-serving commercial district as those, those along Cross Street are where the GBD one is today. So that, it's all, like, that's a very sort of modest cluster of parcels which are along Cross Street and sort of oriented to Cross Street, so they have almost like that little neighborhood-serving Main Street feel. The along Holton Street and East Street, up in that area right before the town line, it's, it's a it's hard to imagine, particularly with the, the sort of relationship it has with the surrounding single-family residential and, and just how it's composed. I don't see those turning into a more general commercial, perhaps. The type of conversion which you might see just continue out as it has naturally evolved is toward the, I guess you might call them sort of family-oriented commercial users or services where you have the the indoor playgrounds and the uh daycares or schools even, or other recreational almost oriented uses.
You have ja- gymnastics and dance studios and things like that.
Yeah, so you could see more use, more of the properties continue to convert into that manner, in, in which case you might have a entire cluster of those types of uses, which I, I think from maybe some residence's point of view wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing. There are um certainly, those are traffic generators themselves, so they're not impact-free um in terms of those uses. Um, but there, there are different types of impacts, I think, than people perceive from limited industrial users. We're not necessarily yeah, I I think that's, that's probably, like, if you were to just let it, let it go, um, nat- naturally, that might be what you tend to see in terms of evolution, or you might see more encroachment from residential uses vis a vis forty B still.
One, one question I had is about um
Sally, one
Okay, I'll wait.
Interrupt, we, we have actually reached the end of our entire time this evening, and we haven't gotten to marketing yet. So um, Josh, you have, you have fascinated us for twenty extra minutes. So um, the, I, I just to bring us a little more towards schedule, so the questions before us are um, are there things in Josh's um presentation that we think are missing? Are, are there any suggestions for improvement? And then uh the next step is, how do we get people to appear on April fourth? So the first one, go ahead, teaching.
Josh, I'm trying to figure out your, your last three approaches, and the third one, letting market forces. I'm, I, so I, I had an artist studio, you know, in Union Square before that big development came and it, it, it was a light industrial. And of course, it got bought up by condos, now it's, you know, multi-use, sort of high, high-density, multi-use, really, you know, extravagant development's going on. So is that, is that what you mean by market forces in the third setting and that? Like, if, if, I don't see the, you know, the very common development in those scenarios, is it, you know, with the, with the, you know, lots of, lots of, instead of the forty Bs, say, but it's, it's more of a uh um, you know, housing on top, you know, retail on the bottom, sort of a whole new sort of neighborhood, um, community, you know, burgeoning. And is that the highest use and highest sort of income that the um, town would be able to receive from that kind of a thing? And is that a market-driven thing, or is that sort of a, a very, you know, planned development issue?
Yeah, I don't, I think it would depend somewhat upon like to allow that type of conversion, i- you would end up having to change the zoning in that direction, and I don't, I don't think that's what I'm advocating for. I think it would be, um, I guess what I mean by the market forces in this case would be to continue the, toward the more commercial and less industrial uses over time, which, which I think is more or less allowed by the current zoning. So it, I think on that third option, the approach is effectively that if you didn't change zoning very much from what you have today, you would consider, you would um, conceivably see the same sort of conversion and evolution of uses that you have been seeing, just continue over time. So that, that would be more of what I'm imagining for that third option. Um, not necessarily that this is gonna turn into a Union Square or, or something like that. I don't think it doesn't have the same real estate and access attributes as Union Square does, of course. Um, eh, the other thing about it is, from a town planning perspective in Winchester, I don't think you want to uh, displace the type of mixed-use redevelopment energy that you're trying to focus on North Main Street and downtown into this area, which could, like, if you were to create a mixed-use zone here, you could take some of that energy away from those two other areas, which I think are much more they have much better attributes to accept that mixed-use redevelopment than this area does.
So when you say, we're gonna see what we're seeing now, you're, you're saying like the forty Bs? The, the, sort of the most use out of these lots of land?
Well, the fo- I'm, I, I hesitate to focus on the forty Bs, cuz the truth about the forty Bs is, I mean, it is tricky because no matter what we do with the zoning, of cour- that's what forty Bs do, they override the current zoning. So you, we cannot necessarily control, we cannot stop one of these properties from converting to a forty B, through a forty B until the town of Winchester hits the ten percent threshold, of course, but um so it's a, I, I, I hesitate to sort of plan for or against you know, focus on forty Bs.
What, what are we seeing? When you say what, it's gonna happen, like what we're seeing, what, what are we seeing? What are you seeing?
Oh, the convert, like the um Asera School, or the Little Flippers, or the Gymnastics, or the Kids Theater, like, I think that's where what's likely to be the tipping point is you might, five years from now, not necessarily have so much a light industrial base there, or a limited industrial or manufacturing, but you will see a cluster of family-oriented services and businesses there. For some might be exactly what they want it to be, but it, from a townwide sort of text generation perspective, might not be what you
So um I think at this point that if anyone has any um thoughts about what they would like to see, or any additions to Josh's presentation, or any concerns about it. Um, I think at this point, if you just send them to Josh directly, that would probably be the most efficient. Um, and we'll make sure that Josh's email gets out, I think it even, might even be on the presentation you just showed us. Um, and then uh, Josh, can you uh send your um, your presentation to the board, the one that you gave tonight, just so that people can uh
Yeah, that'd be great to have a copy of, it'd be great.
Yeah, um, just send it to planningboard@winchester.us, that will just get it to us all. The next thing that we need to talk about is marketing. Um, and I think we really need to do better than we have in the past. Um, so there's a list of ideas that I, I got from actually another meeting I was at.
Good.
Um, and one of them is to make use of the, uh, the town manager has a weekly newsletter, certainly we can put it out there. Um, we have, I don't know if we have another meeting. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, I hope, would be very interested in this, and so um, Richard, as our liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, can you um offline, if we could talk? And maybe you could suggest how we get this news out?
Go ahead.
And uh, actually, this list has just kind of run out. Because this is not the list I thought I was thinking about.
I have my screen share set up from the slides that Carol Savage presented on the Communication Study Committee's existing channels at work, but Nick, you had a question.
Oh, no, I just thought that someone was wanting to speak that was on mute, but I think I was mistaken.
Okay, um, and I just want to, let's see, uh, we were supposed to end at eight thirty-five. And, but let's keep going, I think, getting, do you wanna?
Maybe I can just page through these slides really fast and we can keep it on the agenda for the next meeting, which I think is on the fourth.
Well, the fourth is when our we have to get the marketing done by the fourth.
The, by the fourth, right, okay. Can I, can I share?
Yes, I have to remember how to do that. Hold on one second. There you go.
Okay, so um, share screen. And I think that, I tried to close all my extra things. Yeah, this is it, share. So this is a screenshot of the presentation and the, this is off of YouTube. And um, I can send around the link to this presentation. Um, and I'm sorry if it's kind of small, maybe I can make it bigger, let me see. No, I just went down. All right, well, so th- these slides, hold on, I'm really sorry. So she did, she did an inventory of official web-based Town of Winchester channels, websites, email listservs, um, Facebook followers and Twitters, uh Twitter followers and their statement of assessment, and I just, maybe I'll just page through these, existing channels analysis, resident-led communications, Facebook book groups and followers, and then organizations that engage in local issues and the assessment, and then um other towns, other Town of Winchester communications is um um, listed here, so mailings, telephone alerts, departmental outreach, um, intra-government, town meeting email list, meetings and hearings, and electronic billboards. Um, it's a really, real patchwork quilt, and then we have our WinCam website, the social media, the TV channels, the publicly generated content, and the federal mandate to provide up to four channels. to provide up to four channels. And then these are the pages, I can only even tell you what this says. These are the pages visited ranked by unique page visits. And, um.
So can you give us like the executive summary of which ones we should pay attention to?
Um.
So the social media, the social media, that's something we would have to, um, I think go to the town social media.
Well, let me share this. I, I don't know that I can, um, summarize this in such a short amount of time because I just saw this this afternoon.
Well, let's, let's, let's not. Let's just grab some ideas, um, and maybe, so I, I, I know the town that has Instagram and Facebook. Um, getting it out to, um, I think also one of the things that I think we talked about when we met with Josh last week was getting, uh, like a, an ad in the Daily Times Chronicle. Like a quarter page ad or a six page ad. Um. I think it's important that we get something out to the neighborhood there, um, but I don't know that we have the, um, just the, the number of people required to get that done right now.
Could you, could you do that through the precinct team, uh, town meeting?
We could send it out to the town precinct. Thank you. Um, send out to precinct members.
Town meeting members, yes. Good teaching. And congratulations, by the way.
Oh, that's right. You were a new town member. Um, let's see.
So the Chamber of Commerce is a definite, um, and what I do understand is that the, one of the best reaches in town is through the schools. So that would be Morocco. But it would also be Lynch.
I, I don't know if all the PTOs have just a, a list, but I know that Ambrose PTO has every Sunday has a, you know, announcement, a blast.
Is this something that's they would accept? I mean, this is.
I have no idea.
Well, it's, it's, they do like at the end, like this is what's happening in town. Here's some of the things.
Okay, okay.
Also here's sports groups and that's a huge soccer club right there that must get an enormous amount of traffic. I have no idea.
Okay, so we could reach out to the soccer club. Um.
It says Realtors here.
Oh, Realtors? Is that something the Realtors would be interested in? Do we have that many Realtors? Should we deal with that? Um, we got a hand up from Pamela, um, and I just want to say before I forget, uh, Windcam also runs ads, uh. Pamela Court, which Windcam.
I just wanted to let you know that I see Winchester High School newsletter and they always have community announcements at the end. So if the planning board wanted to make an announcement, I'm almost positive. I can't say one hundred percent, but I'm almost positive that the high school would be very happy to add it to their newsletter.
Okay, so Winchester High School. Thank you. Um, so I have a list of, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Oh, I got Daily Times Chronicle twice.
Well, the, the, the Facebook groups are huge. I mean, there's thirteen thousand people in the Winchester Mass Residence Group and many of them are not residents, or not many, some of them are not residents, but they would nonetheless be there because they have an interest in the town.
Right, but we, we don't have an official presence on that, so that would require us to reach out to someone who does. So we would have to find someone and say, would you please post this?
Can there be an official flyer made up that we just share?
We have an official flyer. Josh has one, um, and I meant to bring it up this evening, but I forgot, um.
I think I can open it in short order. Let me see if that's true. No, it's not. It's not true. It's not true. I can't.
Yeah.
Well, the flyer could be circulated by the town meeting members, which is a great idea, or we could put, I mean, I'm over there all the time. The soccer club, Russian math, I can post it in some of the businesses. I don't, I don't know that that would hit the local demographic. Are we looking also for business owners or mostly residents?
Both.
Both, so. I can drop some off.
Yeah, I'm, I'm told also that, uh, the, the, the bulletin boards at the coffee shops are a good place to leave things. And there's also.
The indoor tennis club is right there. Little Flippers is right there. Russian math, the dance, kid stock. I mean, there's parents in and out. I don't know where they're coming from.
So it's the family-based businesses, um, you know, activities.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's figure that out.
Okay, I mean, what we did for North Main Street was door to door and was a lot of work, but it yielded a surprising turnout of m- more than ten. You know, it was maybe like thirty. Um, I'd certainly like us to do better. But I think if we did all the ideas that you have now.
Um, yeah, I think.
I have seven now.
So I, I think, um, we need to get those printed up. And, and one of the things, um, are you, oh, there you are, Josh, um, uh, I don't know, is your, is your flyer portrait or landscape?
I think it was portrait.
Yeah, I think a, a version that's landscape, if we were to give it to WinCam, let's say that might be easier to display and also um, just, just in terms of formatting on the screen makes it easier to read. But let me. So I think, I think we've got a bunch of ideas. We will have to put them. So if any of the board wants to, um, help with some legwork on this, uh, just let me know and, uh, I'll coordinate with you um, to get the, we'll, we'll print up some of these, these posters and we'll get them out. Um, so we should do that this week. Um, so getting it out to the town manager's newsletter, Richard Leaf, where are you? Are you still with us? Yes, there you are.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, we, you and I should talk soon about this. Um, but reach out to me if you, if you go, if anyone on the board wants to help. And, uh.
And Suzanne can help with putting an ad in the Daily Times Chronicle. We have a small budget for that.
Yes, yes, we should figure out when the best time for that is. Um, and since they are daily, we, we want to see whether it costs how much it will cost, maybe have it in for several days versus just a one-timer.
Who would be a good connection to the high school newsletter? Is that you, Carrie?
I can.
Do, do you have children in the high school?
I do. I have a freshman. Yep, I can send it to the person who circulates the newsletter.
So why don't we continue this offline?
Yes, let's do it.
Because we have, um, a couple of things. So right now we are, thank you, where, sorry, Josh, I just put something in front of your face. Um, so Josh, I, there you are. Um, this is so confusing sometimes. Um, so thank you very much. That was great. Uh, we will be in touch prior to April fourth. And again, anyone has any, um, comments or suggestions, please send them directly to Josh. And Josh, your email is on that, uh, on the.
Presentation.
Presentation.
Yes, and I, I will, um, tomorrow I'll send an email to the planning board at Winchester dot U S with the presentation from this evening and two versions of the flyer, a portrait and a landscape. And that way you'll have my email address and you can reply if you have anything else.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
You all. Always a pleasure. Um, so now we move on to mass build and that is, um, well, let's just see what we have to squeeze in and out of our agenda.
We have two minutes here. I think I'm suppo- I was supposed to, um, do the mass build stuff.
So, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We have someone here who, um, the, the person who was interested in the dog grooming, that's at eight fifty-five. We're two minutes from that. So may I suggest that we take that first? And then we can get through that and then come back to mass builds and then shave a little bit of time off the town meeting planning board report. And, um, is the person who wants to talk about dog grooming with us? There you are. Why don't you, uh, unmute yourself and just say hi?
Hello, my name is Jill Horahan. Uh, I am the owner of Metro Pets, uh, grooming boutique in Natick, Massachusetts. We're a certified fear-free salon. I am also the owner of the Pet Republic, a positive reinforcement, Lehman-based dog training facility in Cambridge.
Okay, and I drive by your shop every time I go to work. Um, so, uh, the issue before this board at the moment is that we don't have an explicit, um, use for dog grooming, which is allowed in a center business district. However, there is an explicit list of the parking requirements for such a business. So, um, apparently either some, someone was thinking about dog grooming downtown, but it didn't make it into the actual use table. And each thing, do you happen to have the use table handy?
I will share screen on what, um, Sally had sent, but I will look for the used table off screen here.
Yeah, so, so the, the question arises, um, so we do the, the town, um, the town does have a definition of kennel and vet. And they all have to do, and they all get grouped into the same category depending upon the number of animals, which would be allowed to be, um, whatever you're doing to the animal. Um, and I believe the, the limit is three. And so.
Three onsite at any one time.
That's what I'm hoping, um, if we, yeah, is it, is it, is it more than three, equal to three or less than three?
Well, I have to look at the definition again.
Yeah, it's in the definition, so.
You said kennel and what was the other one you said? I didn't realize they were in there.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the definitions table. It's kennel and, um.
Oh, kennel is more than three where they're housed, groomed, bred, boarded, trained or sold.
Right, so it's the groom thing, so.
Right, I didn't realize groom was in there. Wow.
So it's kind of the sort of a, a, a real catch-all, um. And so the question that we have is, um, how do we want to handle this? Now, Jill, how many, how many, how many dogs, how many grooming stations, I guess, is, is that would you, would you be considering in your business?
Yeah, so the amount of grooming stations is directly correlated to the, uh, square footage of any given location. In my location in Natick, we have three active stations. Uh, so I have three, because we're, uh, a what, a one-on-one service, we have three groomers working at any given time. And we have an extra, we have an extra table for nail trims. But that depends on the square footage. Uh, we, because we are a high-end shop, uh, we allot a lot of square footage per service provider so that they have full circulation around the table and the dogs aren't cramped together. The ratio is widely variable across industry. So if any of you have, I don't know if any of you have pets or if you've had a chance to go into a different service model like you might see at PetSmart, um, the square footage allotted to any different service provider is very, very small. Everything's cramped really close together. And in that model, you might have five or six people working simultaneously with all of their dogs backed up behind them as well. Um, but in our model, everybody's spread out from each other. We see one dog, we see them from start to finish and they go home.
Do dogs linger on the site before and after their, their appointment?
Only in as much as if you drop, if you dropped off and you were five minutes late to pick up your dog. Um, we don't, we don't allow for lingering before an appointment. Um, and we really discourage any lingering after. The, the methodology of our services is that they go from table to table, as we say, they come down, they go immediately out. We do have, you know, because people can sometimes be late, we do have containment so that there's no dog, as we say, we don't say hi, um, so that dogs don't have free unfettered access to other dogs or to ourselves. Uh, inside of that can make a very unsafe environment and that is a model that is sometimes seen inside our industry. Play and groom where there are dogs running around on the floor underneath the groomers. It's a major trip adage, in my opinion. Um, so we do have, we do have some containment, but the model is meant to be one-on-one, direct grooming.
And in your certification as a business in the, in the profession, um, are there public health standards that are imposed upon your, your business type?
This is a great question and one that is being inside this Commonwealth that is being worked on and defined at this time. Um, but the scary answer is no. We hold ourselves to an industry standard. So we are saying, my Metro Pets, my salon is sanitation certified. Um, but as far as are we inspected by the health inspector, should we be? Yes. Are we? No. Can I tell you, can I personally tell you everything about cleansing and the difference between Girardia and Parbo and all that? Yes, absolutely. But the fact of the matter is, and I think that this is important to talk to your planning board about, is that the model of daycare without boarding and grooming as well as dog training are woefully under-regulated on a national level right now. That is something that Massachusetts has put forward several bills, um, be, unfortunately on the heels of some serious incidents that have happened uh, inside of the industries.
But right now. It is in the, in the field of day boarding.
In the four, it's all of, I could tell you, in grooming day tra- in grooming training and boarding.
Right, okay.
So let's, so that, that answers a, a, a question we have heard a lot about was what sort of, um, what, where does the health department come in on this and how do we handle um, concerns of the public as to smell, noise, waste, you know, all of those things. And it sounds like this is a question that can't be answered because there are no regulations. Um, so that, that's an important, um, thing that I think we don't understand the implications of. Um, what, what is your timeframe that you were looking to start a business that you were considering if you were going to go forward?
Oh, we're operating as soon as this is rectified. Um, we're, you know, we're in an active process of site selection at this time.
Good.
Um, because we, we do have a, 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 a longer term process of looking at our zoning bylaws to understand how this all fits in. Um, so let me, um.
You're looking for definitions?
I'm looking for zoning. No, the definitions are on the left.
Center of your screen.
Yeah, no, I see the definitions. I'm, I'm now looking for the use table.
Section three, yeah.
Yep, that's right here. You just have to get it up, so.
Quick question. I'm looking at your very cute website from your Natick location. Um, yeah, it's really sweet. And, um, you have behavior consultation? Do you do one-on-one mostly or are you doing group training?
We do, so we do private consultation. So I will say that uh, Metro Pets in Natick is in its second iteration. Um, if you go now to Google and Google Metro Pets in Natick and the word fire, we were in, uh, my original facility was located in, um, in a building which burned down with nothing to do with us. Uh, and at that facility, we did have a training floor there as well, so we were able to do group classes. My new location grew in its, uh, grooming, our fear-free grooming really resonated with the public. Uh, but we lost our training floor when we moved into the Natick location. I am not looking to put a training facility, to put a training floor in, uh, a new Metro Pets. We take care of that all up in Cambridge.
Oh, individual pet training would go off like wildfire here.
Oh, thank you. Well, I am a CBCC and, and, you know, as are my T, so I'm certified canine behaviors. That's really how I got into um, grooming in the, the grooming in the first place. So yes.
Oh, thank you.
A lot of it, I can answer all.
Mostly just clear, I'm, I'm a big dog person, so I'm interested in your business, but I'm mostly clarifying that you would not have groups of dogs on site.
No, no, there, we wouldn't be doing any sort of, um, group activities.
Right.
Neither daycare nor boarding is part of our model, nor will it ever be.
So you, you didn't answer the question about the number of dogs on site, but it's a one-on-one relationship between the groomer and the dog.
That's right.
And it's in its generously allotting space per the square footage of the site that you lease.
That's right. So I do see that for us, um, that the three, three service providers is a model that works really well for us.
Right.
And I can certainly see that continuing to work.
So here, do you have, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to know that, or just, it, I'm enlightened to know that um, grooming appears in the definition of kennel in our zoning bylaws, which means that it's technically included in eleven and twelve.
It is, but notice that it is not. It is, but notice that it is not. So. It is not in the CBD, actually, if you go to seven.
There's seven, three, one.
Yeah, so if you search with seven, three, eleven, you'll find that it is not listed there. Um, the title of uses does not include it. But it, so currently, I believe the only place it's technically allowed is in a light industrial. And we do have, um, a couple of. Veterinary clinics in town which are pre-existing non-conforming. So I think, I think the, this gets a little complicated in terms of. Is it, it sounds like it, is it just grooming, is it also behavioral um training?
So for my uses, our behavior training is done in the homes of the clients that we go to. I, we don't do any sort of consultation on site, the model that I'm looking to talk about today. Is a, is a pure grooming model.
Right. So, uh, you gotta go to seven, three, eleven, I think. In our really horrible website here, but that's what we got.
It's blank, seven, three, one, one is blank.
Oh, you click on the pa, there's a, there's a link. Embedded in the zoning bylaw that takes you to the thing. Um.
There is a use table somewhere.
Yeah, um.
Wasn't I just there?
You see how it says show full table, or maybe it, it is showing full table, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, so there, there, it is not in this table, I mean, we looked there, it's not in there, um. So I, I think.
Well, let me go back to one thing that I put at the bottom of my memo.
So we were thinking about it as a general service establishment, that's, that's. What the planning board has to determine, is that correct?
If we were to, oh, if we wanted to get it in under the existing zoning bylaws. The only two places would be personal service or general service. Um, those are vaguely enough defined, I did reach out to town council a few weeks back when we first discussed this. And they're apparently rather vaguely defined, so. And, and then this is where Sally and Eching, your work on other towns.
Right, I wanted to get back to my memo, I had a paragraph at the bottom and I can't find my memo now. Here it is, at the bottom, it said. Um, the main thing I see in other towns zoning around animal-related uses is to impose restrictions. On what a dog grooming business must do and must not do. Do comply with state and local board of health rules, well, we've answered that question. Um, do soundproof the business to ensure that barking is not heard outside the business and ventilate such. That animal smells cannot be detected outside the business, do not allow more than three dogs being worked on at once, or I put X. But at this point in the conversation, it's three, and no more than X dogs permitted in the lobby, and do not provide boarding and do not provide outdoor dog runs or pens. And so, I mean. I don't know what the procedures of the planning board are to work any of those into our. Decision without having to get a vote from town meeting. I don't understand about that at all.
We could, I mean, so one of the things that we would have to pursue, and this is a talk with legal. Is to, this would have to go through a special permit. And in the special permit, we could have conditions.
Ah.
And so those, you know, not having our, our handy town planner on staff, it's, I, we would have to go and say. Um, here are the sort of conditions we'd want to put in. And what sort of, um. Are we creating? Um. No, Carrie, you had the word earlier.
Precedent?
Precedent, are we creating precedent by doing this when we want to lead up to probably for something. Perhaps more substantial in the fall. And I, I, I was looking for it, but I know Woburn has some very specific, they specifically call out grooming in their zoning bylaws. Um, so they, they've gone about it in a different fashion, rather than just using um general services or personal services, so. If this board is interested in pursuing the option of using a special permit via general services. Um. Then. I think the question is, what sort of? Conditions would we put on the special permit to ensure that, A, that we are, um, I mean, you know. Encouraging safe use and, and making sure that the business is, um. Doesn't have negative impacts on the businesses around it, which I think is a concern. Um. So any of those conditions would be something we could bring up now, and then I could draft a memo to town council and ask him about. Um, the legality of this procedure, can we use a special permit with this and put these conditions on, it doesn't set precedent? Um, et cetera, so.
Eaching, can you put that list up that's at the bottom of my memo? The one I was just reading from.
Yes.
So, so what you're saying, is it? Is, is it this would not obligate us to do the same thing in the future, it, it would basically allow us to do it in this case.
No, eating, it's in the pocket.
That is a quite, that is, that is my hope, but that again would have to go through town council.
Okay.
And so I just, you know, the, 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 the thing before us right now is that, um. I'm sorry, Jill Horehan, how would you like to be, um, addressed?
Jill is fine, thank you.
So Jill is looking for this some, in, in, in the near term rather than the long term, so, you know, putting this off until. November, which is when we would have to do it for town meeting, might not be a timescale she's interested in. So we can, you know, see whether or not there's some way of accommodating this use if we feel. If we feel that this is a good use for downtown, I mean, that's a question we haven't had yet, we haven't said, yeah, we think dog groomers should be downtown.
Well, we, we may think this dog groomer should be downtown and, and, and you know, in the future, we'll, we'll decide that on a case-by-case basis. Uh, because we've had the opportunity to meet with Jill. And we've learned a little bit about the nature of her particular business.
Well, I. As much as Jill has given us a great presentation, I would want to make sure that whatever just that.
Of course, yeah, no, we, we need to do the due diligence.
Yeah, and it's also a question of if we feel like dog grooming is an appropriate use for downtown. Then this isn't a, you know, then, then we're essentially saying, yeah, we approve of this and we're going to use this. Special case now in order to allow Jill to move forward and we'll clean up the zoning in, in, in November. But if we decide that we don't think dog grooming should be downtown, then we will not proceed. And so I think that's the question, the first question before the board is, do we think dog grooming is a good idea?
For the CBD, I do.
Okay.
I do as well, I, I see a lot of um vans parked in my neighborhood. Drive-by grooming.
Okay, um, that sounds like a really quick haircut for drive-ride grooming.
And as Carrie said, I think there's a good market, so.
Yeah.
There's a market for the town, I will raise the concern, you know, and I have a Swissie, she weighs a hundred and twelve pounds and she looks scary, but she's really just a heated body pillow, but. People are afraid of dogs, so if we put it in the center business district, we do want to be mindful of the fact that we've, we've sort of forced everyone running to CVS. And Starbucks to interact with dogs.
So there's a pet, there's a pet supply store there that people bring their dogs into all the time.
And I think that location, you know, I mean, that's sort of the thing is if it's, if it's on the end, you know, and there's a, so I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just raising it. I just want to sort of say it aloud.
So I, I always come in and I say, how does it differ from what's happening right now?
Yeah, it.
So right now. Rottweiler walking around, you can do.
We need very little grooming.
Yeah, but, but the point is, is there are, there, we, we don't, there already the possibility that you're going to interact with dogs downtown is there. We'll just increase that to the point that people become uncomfortable. If we get twenty dog groomers downtown, perhaps, but. Um, I think that, so I also want to point out that, um, eaching, Sally and Carrie are all dog owners. So I think they're inherently biased.
I own my bias.
Nick, Nick, where do you fall on the dog grooming?
Uh, we, we, we have guinea pigs, so I, I don't think that, I think that disqualifies me, uh, as a, uh. As a, as a, as a, a dog grooming, um.
Qualifies you as an impartial, you, you, qualifies you as impartial.
Right, impartial, sure.
Yeah, we should recuse ourselves as dogs.
She works out of her house in Woburn and I would never leave her, so much as I'm impressed by the sales pitch. Um, it's gonna have to fall on more receptive ears, but.
Sorry, wait, wait a second, um, I'm not sure where you're coming in, Sally.
I'm, I'm coming in on Jill giving a really good pitch about her business being a super high-quality. Um, establishment.
Okay, well, let me just first see whether the board is up for this, so we've got three people, Nick, how do you fall on dog grooming in the CBD?
Well, I, I, I guess my issue is, I, I, I'm still. Thinking about this particular business. And about the potential to have. Kind of, uh. You know, humans making the decision on the business. And, and I'm a little more reluctant about making a general zoning change that will be automatic.
Okay, but. So.
I didn't get that. Wait, is the special permit okay with you, but you don't want?
Yes, but yeah, special permit, I'm saying that, that, that we basically have a situation that's being brought to us. You know, it's one in, it's the only one since I've been on the, on the board. Where someone is looking for a, a, a different use than is, uh. And, and I think we have the capacity to make the decision on this business. And I mean, whether we amend the zoning generally, I think. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, um, with, you know. Uh, I, I, I prefer if possible to have. You know, humans make the decision. And we're in the, we're in the, uh, we, we have the ability at this point, capacity, uh, to do that. Um, and, and I feel like we're opining on this particular business. Um, I might need a little more convincing, you know, whether we're going to take this to town meeting eventually. Um. And my preference would be to, to make a, a decision, you know, based on our due diligence of this particular business.
So. Um, my opinion is that. I don't think dog grooming is, is. Inappropriate in downtown. But I don't like making decisions based on individual businesses because I think. In order to be fair to every business which comes before us. Um, we should be, you know, the, the, the way I see it is zoning sets the base. And that makes it very apparent to everyone what's possible and what's not possible. And that. When we start to move into. Individual, decisions on individual businesses, then we start moving towards, um. I think it's a slippery slope, because I, I'm concerned that then it. It really goes, rather than having sort of like the dispatch at building commissioner who says, yes, that's in the bylaw, no, that's not in the bylaw. It's, um, you know, we, it comes down to, is the person do a good job at presenting their business? Maybe the. Yeah, so, so, so my, my perspective on this one is that if this board is considering. Moving forward with. If we think dog grooming is good in the CBD. Then we should say it's a valid use and we are going to amend our use table to accommodate it. If we are not willing to turn this, if we're not willing to open it up to anyone who wishes to do so within whatever constraints we want. Then I don't think that we should say, okay, this one person is special, therefore, we're going to give them the special permit. But we're going to close the door on everyone else, so that's where I'm coming.
Well, I, yeah, I, 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 I can, I think you're making a good point.
This is my new person ignorance of the process, if we go through town meeting and amend the bylaw to include dog grooming, can we put the limit on the number? What do we, when do we have to put the limit on the number of dogs to the three and over or it's a kennel?
Do it in the definition section.
So that, so no matter what dog grooming business comes into the center busy, business district, it would have three dogs maximum.
Could change that definition to, we could, we could, we could put in something specific for the CBD if we wished. You know, if we feel that the CBD is a special area, like for instance, right now, you can only do it in IL, which. You know, big places, so, um, it's, you know, we could say that. There's something special about the CBD, it had, there are specific impacts we wish to avoid, so yeah, we could write that special language.
And I think. So I, oh, no, she.
Jill, go ahead, please.
I was hoping that I might be able to, um. Lend my industry input on this, I honestly, I completely agree with you, Diab, that. I, I appreciate the vote of confidence, but I completely understand what you're saying that. Uh, approval based on charisma is not approval at all. Um, and as someone who works in behavior, uh, there's a lot of ways I think that you could operationalize the approval here. Based on a lot of the concerns that came out of Sally's very thoughtful memo. Um, about, uh, and I came prepared tonight to speak about. Um, hygiene, ventilation, deniash standards of, um. Decibel transfer through, these are things that we've all worked on, uh, and, and that we all excel at. So the, the difference between general services and personal services, which is I, and I feel is going to be the difference between large batch. Grooming and a personal one-on-one service, so I think that, that if, if you will, there might be a way to, to sculpt. Within the concerns that you've already brought up to make something quite lovely that would work.
And the question in front of us is, do we do that by a special permit now? With the intention of bringing a bylaw revision to the town meeting in November? Or do we wait until November, is that right, Diab?
I think that's, those are, that's the fork in the road, yeah.
But we could, we could retain the special permit quality of the zoning change if we, if we choose, right?
We certainly could, um, I think that.
I, I don't know if that's the right way to go, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and this is again where, um, where legal could certainly let us know whether or not. Moving forward with a special permit now. Creates an issue with the zoning in the future, and that's just, we just, without that, um. I don't know, Jill, if you know, we, we, we're in the midst of getting a new town planner, so. Um, you're, you're talking to the, to the, to the, uh, to the amateurs here, so, um. What I think a way forward on this, and I, I still think that this board has to make a decision as to whether we want to. Include dog grooming as a, a listed use in the CBD. Um, I just think that. I think it's a fair thing to do, if we're going to allow one in, we should allow, we should make it possible for everyone who wishes to do so. But let me, so let me talk to town council and Jill, I don't think you're going to get an answer out of us this evening, I think that's just pretty obvious. Um, so, the question that we have is, what sort of conditions can we apply? Knowing that there. The regulations, the health regulations. There doesn't seem to be a recognized standard, or at least one that is. Um, used. In Massachusetts, it sounds like that it's there.
Not without boarding, not without.
Not without going. For grooming seem to be. Um, so that's maybe something, talking to the board of health and finding, you know, asking them. What they would consider as appropriate, so that we would, that could be part of the conditions. Um, so these are the board of health or the health department. Either one of them, I think the health department is more appropriate. And then.
Another, another consideration that came up in my research that I didn't capture in my memo, and it has to do with water and sewer. Um, and the question was whether the business needs to get the opinion of the DPW. That the amount of water that they're using and discharging, this isn't from other towns, right? And I'm not, I'm not talking about, this is my thinking, I'm just telling you what I read about, and I'm like, really, huh, god. Um, so water. Um, so water usage and then the, the one town, it was what kind of chemicals are you putting into our wastewater? And the woman instantly switched to all organic products instantly. Um, so I, I just saying, there's a lot to this question that. Towns have had their residents confront the towns with that. Um, makes me. On the one hand, want to be a very business friendly town. Um, it's crazy not to be. Um, and on the other hand, to not, um. Properly anticipate. The kinds of concerns that we would seek to address in our definitions. And, and standards section or whatever for dog grooming.
Right. And, and I think the other thing.
She has her hand up again, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that these are worthy concerns. I do wanna clarify that as far as water usage. Um, my dog grooming salon actually. A, a dog grooming salon uses less water. On average than at one single family residence, which is, which is shocking. Um, but I think it's, it's important to add. Um, and are the, the quality of shampoos, of course, varies across professional, uh, applications. Uh, but is just in line with the quality of shampoos that you might be using and applying and putting down your own drains. But water, you, dog grooming is surprisingly green because it's more like a military shower than a bath.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and the thing is that, you know, do we have? When we start looking at all of these concerns, we have to look at all of the, the salons downtown and ask. Are the same concerns being asked of them? So, you know, it's a question of. It's easy to pick on things when you think about them, but you know, if this is a concern for a dog grooming, it should be also a concern for. Anything which uses shampoos or other chemicals. So we, I think we need to be fair about this. And I think. I think what we've learned tonight is sort of the realm of our ignorance, our circle of ignorances. We, we understand more about what we don't know. Um, so I think the moving forward, I think would be useful, Jill, if maybe you and I spoke. Within, we have to make sure that we're not violating open meeting law. But I, I think it would be useful to understand how you work within the communities you do. Um, I'd like to, you know, and, you know, when we move forward, I think we are going to have to talk to the, to the health department and things like that. But I think we need more, the board needs more information to move forward on this because it is. Very new.
Part, partly from Jill and partly from council, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And, uh. You know, we do, um, you know, I don't think we have, I know of only one other groomer in town. And so I suppose I could go and contact them and see. Other than the traveling groomer, the drive-by groomer. That I don't know about.
So, so you're gonna talk to council and, um, you're gonna find a time to chat with Jill and get a little bit more information to share with council?
I think that that could be parallel. I mean, there are some legal questions about precedents that I think have to be answered.
Yeah.
As well as how we specify conditions that might, you know, there's a, there's a line between what we can specify, I think in terms of. Zoning versus health concerns. So I don't know where that line gets drawn. Can we put conditions on it saying you must have this sort of licensing or regular, I don't know where that line is drawn, so that's something that we have to discover. Um, so. Um, I think that, um, so we're gonna. Probably pick this up again, I would imagine with our current schedules, probably in a few weeks. Jill, so if you hang tight, you know, um, hopefully we'll have an answer one way or the other. Um, I do encourage the board to think hard about. Um, the difference between. Seeing this as a continued use in the CBD that we put into zoning. Versus a single special permit for this one establishment. Um, I, it's just because I, I, I do get the sense that we're not, we don't have a, a unanimous. Thought about this on the board.
Also, I thought you said that if we decided to do this by special permit, it would be best if we also decided. To bring a bylaw to the fall town meeting. Did you, did I hear you say that?
I would think that that would be. That's the. That's my opinion is that I would want us to make a commitment to putting groomers into downtown in the zoning bylaw. If we're gonna do this by special permit to indicate that this is an approved use.
Or North Main Street, GBD two and three.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay, good.
Next, next, next spring. Um, so, okay, so I think we're, I think we have rounded the corner on this one this evening. Uh, appreciate, um, that you've shown up, Jill, um, and let's, let's get in touch and talk about some of those specifics. Um, so that we can get a better idea of what would be going on and how we would move forward. Are there any other comments from the board on this? Okay.
I think it's great.
Thank you. Um, so let's move on to, uh, so we're now at, at, at nine thirty. And we still have, uh, mass bills and Springtown meeting planning board report. Uh. So. Why don't we? Quickly go to, do you wanna do a quick overview of mass builds and then we'll jump into planning or what, what does the board wanna do?
I can give a five-minute, um, thing on mass builds, because there's, there's not much to report on.
Okay, go.
Maybe that. Uh, so, so Sally and I, uh. It's mostly Sally has been looking at this mass builds data that tracks, um, the. Major developments in, in towns around Boston. And so in Winchester, we have not, um, updated it. I don't. Not sure who updated it, um, previously, but some of the latest updates were, uh, Pansy Patch, Greystone. Um, which here, um, you will see is incorrect. Um, for example, it says fifty units of age targeted housing, um, targeted even is spelled incorrectly, but it's not an age, um, designated. Um, development at all. Um, and, uh, so. There, there's that. And then even with Winning Farm here, um. Here it says a hundred and forty-seven units, which is completely out of whack. It's, it's about, I don't know, twenty to forty units. I can't remember. Um, but these are very incorrect. Um, I was trying to edit it by, uh, Sally's, um, things, but like I, I just. It seems like it's a lot of data that perhaps somebody has been dealing with that. You know, hasn't, i- i- it's M A P C's issue and we have a lot of fires in front of us, so I, I al- almost wonder. Um, if we should, uh, not deal with it until our town planner arrives. Um, but Sally has also co- put this together of all, some of the other, um, large development since, um. Winning Farm and, um, Pansy Patch. And so, you know, the, these are some of our best guesses or Sally's best guesses from here. And I've been working with Brian Menter and I, I contacted Janine today, um, on. How to get these exact numbers, because I don't wanna be incorrect again and give them incorrect info and then have to go back to it just to correct it. So I think what the best thing would be is, I, I was trying to work with Janine on getting the actual Z B A, um, decisions. On what was allowed and then trying to fill that in correctly. I haven't done so yet, but, um. That was the plan there. I know.
To your point, I think, I, I really like the idea of putting this on hold. Because we have not updated the information for so many years.
Yeah. Correct. And so this was, um, so the town has put permits on, um, a. Like a automatic e-database. And so we, we got the, the, all the data since April twenty twenty-second when they first started it. And, uh, Sally and I were looking through it and trying to get an understanding, get a grip on what, what's going on. And one thing that we were trying to get is like, how many units are getting demoed? How many units are built per month? And, you know, here, here are some of the big numbers, um. Since April, like, it, it, it varies around, um, seven million dollars, seven to nine million dollars in, uh. Sort of improvements on property, um, in our town that are permitted. So that you could, you could do stuff to your garden and improve it, but you don't have to get a permit. So this stuff is just permitted stuff. And then, you know, we, we charge per dollar an amount to the town. So the town. Um, you know, revenue from these permits. And this is, this is sort of the revenue per month. Um, and so that was just a good information for all of us to sort of understand that there, you know, in a month, approximately seventy to ninety. Um, permits being handed out. Um, and then this was interesting in, in our M A P C, you know, calculation. And I've been wondering this all, you know, a lot, but like, how many units are getting demoed? How many units are getting created? And really generally, if we were looking at sort of these, these numbers, it's, it's really zero, right? There's not, there's not a lot of new housing getting built. Except for some of the big developments like forty B and such, but we don't have the dates from that yet. And I, you know, had to go back to them. And again, this is like. Data mining, that's really interesting, but I don't think that, um, it should be a high priority right now. Um, so that's all I have, really.
That's, that's really interesting. It's really interesting to see it. And, uh, you guys. Put a lot of work into it.
Um, I've got two questions, or a question and a clarification. So the first is the clarification. So I'm wondering in the Pansy Patch or the Greystone, when they use the word targeted. I think they might be talking about, I know my recollection is they did things like. Make sure there's a bedroom on the first floor. So I'm wondering if the word targeted, it's not, because I don't think. It's not in the deed, but I think they designed the units so that it would be more appealing to people.
Oh.
And it's not restricted.
Yeah, I don't know about, yeah.
As far as I know, it's not. Is that true?
It's not, I don't believe it's restricted.
I wasn't sure if that was something the town meeting imposed on the vote.
It's, it's in the ArcDOT, so I think it was, the ArcDOT is what was, um, designed for that. The other question, the, the question I have is what level of detail is, um, is mass build looking for? Are they looking for individual properties?
Yeah, it, it, well, that was my question.
So I think some of them like must fill in stuff where things like, um, the number of units. Um, is the number of AMI kind of, uh, affordable units? Um, mo- I think that's what is trying to be calculated now, like how many bullet, uh, units are getting built in the region. A, and how many are in affordable camp, how many are not? Um.
I can see that given.
Those were the major things that I thought maybe that was getting at and how big the buildings are. So they're, you know, fifty units versus like townhouses, um, that kind of a thing. So.
So they're not looking to put these little dots everywhere on every, every.
No, I think it's just, it's just a bigger number of like.
Okay, okay.
Bigger calculations.
So, so for instance, the Cross Street project, well, the ones that I put on the data, on the spreadsheet that Eching created. Um. So, and if you wanna know about the data that they're collecting. Um, the, th- that row three goes all the way over to the right. With a bunch of fields that I didn't even try to work on because, um, those are in the database.
I mean, you could go deep dive into this stuff, but I think in, like, some of the things that they really want to know was total housing units, which ones are affordable. Um.
Yes.
Where they are, are they, what type? Is it a large multifamily? Is it, is it, like, you know, townhouses? That kind of thing.
Wow. So I think, you know, I, I, I agree with you that this is, this is all. This is something that maybe we should hand off to our next town planner.
No, I, to understand also, what is the, what is the benefit to the town? Of taking on s- in, this onerous annual or biannual reporting test?
Good for us for even, you know, the town meeting report to just understand the big number, right? And how, what the targets are, like, like Diab does already, um, on the target, um, target numbers.
And this is, this is theater information for the May eleventh, um, housing, emerging housing opportunities in Winchester.
Yeah, but, but I mean, the, 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 we get so much from the M A P C in terms of data from them. We have used their data for so many things and they get it from the communities. So.
Right.
It's not as, it's, it's. Giving them this data is really important because we turn around and we use their products.
And also the governor is putting a very big. Priority on closing the shortfall of what I think is two hundred thousand residential units in. The greater Boston area. I don't remember how that number was arrived at.
In terms of this project, I think, you know, this isn't totally all fact-checked and it's against the permits being, um, given. But I think it's good enough and we can hand it off to an M A P C person that said, hey, this is our best. Right now. Can you do something with that?
Yeah.
What's, um. So my concern. So unfortunately, you said, I don't know if this is, this hasn't been fact-checked. The, the moment you said that made me think, oh, wait a second. Do we really wanna hand them data that?
Right, that, that's my concern too, but in order to fact-check them really thoroughly, it, it's gonna be really time-consuming.
It was very time-consuming to get it as far as we did.
So let me, let me, so I think there might be a compromise in this and that we just say we don't. Um, the. Giving to, giving this to them now, I think, um. I would prefer to see this. Fact, just have another person run over this to make sure that the numbers work out. So that when it goes into the database that it's correct.
Right.
Um, but as you point out, the data that's already in there are so old that. You know. Maybe this just waits.
Probably just do a data sampling and take, you know, how many lines are in this? Take a certain percentage of lines. And if those look good, this sheet's probably good. You don't have to do every single line, probably.
Yeah. But then it falls on who is it who's gonna do that? And, uh.
Can we hire that town planner quickly, please?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to hire the town planner.
It will be a great project for the town planner to learn where to find out what in town.
Yeah.
I think we have so many of those projects. Which one do we give them first? Um, yeah, so I, I personally, I, I would, I would, I would hold off until the town planner comes on board and give this to them. And just say, here, just go verify all this and.
Thank you, Eching, for that.
This is, yeah, this is, this is an amazing amount of effort.
It's interesting.
Um, okay. Spring town meeting planning board report. Um, so typically I just use the last one and I update it and then sometimes I add extra. So I think a couple of town meetings back. Uh, we did a lot of research on other communities and the distribution of demographics and the types of. Um, housing they had in those communities and, you know. So. Coming up, I think the big thing that's coming up for us is actually spring of twenty twenty-four. Which is when we are going to be doing the rezoning of North Main Street as well as the N B T three A overlay. So. I think that we can start to. Educate people about what the choices are coming up. I think people will have lots of questions and I think letting town meeting have a few answers or to set some background. Early and often is good. So I would suggest that, um. If we're gonna have a special sort of, um. Focus in this one, it would be on. What our plans are for the North Main Street corridor and how that fits in with the N B T A. Three A multifamily residential zone. Other than that, I don't have, I, I would assume it's be simply what, what we do in the past where we. List the number of units, what our S H I is, what the, um. What we know about projects moving forward. There was some motion, I think on six fifty-four, we know. I was getting confused. I think it's the Fells Hardware sites.
Yeah, that's right. Six fifty-four is the Fells.
Yeah. So we have, there are some motion in some of those.
I mean, I did try to get, capture a lot of that emerging housing opportunities information in the spreadsheet that Eching set up.
Yeah.
Um, and, and also that housing, emerging housing opportunities. Information meeting is, um, on the eleventh and spring of, 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 of eleventh of April, is that right? And then the Springtown meeting is on the twenty-fourth of April, so.
No, 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 it's eleventh of May.
Oh, it's eleventh of.
It's after town meeting.
Eleventh of May is the emerging housing opportunities? Okay. All right. So, so in fact, people would be eager to hear some of this as a preview at the town meeting report.
One, what, hopefully. Um, so any id- other ideas you'd like to see in the presentation? Um. I will probably be writing it up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, because town meeting is. Almost upon us.
You have a deadline to get the report to the count, to the town clerk?
Yes, the night of town meeting.
Oh, good.
I, uh, I, 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 I hand the, uh, the thumb drive to Matt Griffin and say, here's the report. Uh, more importantly is. Uh, more importantly is the background for the articles. Those have to go in earlier because they have to get printed in the, in the warrant book that goes to town meeting members.
Do we know that deadline?
Uh, no, we don't, but I will assume it was yesterday.
So the big article that I continue to think is going to take a lot of time at town meeting is the revisions to three point five point five. Which is this discussion about variance versus special permit.
Yes.
And so I have still trying to work on a flow chart that diagrams the logic of the existing statement. And what would change with the new statement, and I've been continuing to work on that.
Sally, I think that that, that flow chart would be very critical in helping people understand, so I.
Right.
Be happy to work with you on that, actually.
Oh.
It would clarify a lot of things for me.
What?
Yeah, I, I have a form chart as well. But Sally and I have a disagreement on how complicated the flow chart is.
Well, I think there's more than just three decision points and it is an order of operations, decision tree kind of a thing. And eating, let's totally work on this. I just love you saying that.
Okay. So, um, why don't we, since I think everyone wants to leave for the evening?
Yes, we do.
Um, I would suggest that, um. In our next meeting, if you have something that you would like to consider for the presentation. We have ten minutes in our presentation before town meeting. Um, so if you look at the pres- the presentation for last year, I think is up on the website. If not, I can send it around, you can take a look and that's ten minutes worth. And, uh, oh, I have a disk.
You were working with Matt on getting access to Brian's business files, too.
Yeah, I can't send you the one from earlier because I managed to delete it. Um.
From what?
From like, I, I, I had a unexpected delete experience last March. So, um.
You mean earlier, earlier than twenty twen- twenty twenty two?
Yeah, I would say that's fall of twenty one, I think.
The town will have it.
The town should have it, yes, but I don't know where it's down, that's it, so. I could not tell you right now, so I will send around presentations. Uh, from the, as many back as I can, so you can get a flavor for how long it goes, what ten minutes gives you. Um, I thought we did a pretty good job last time, but we didn't, we didn't really, we didn't do a deep dive on anything last time. So the question is, does, do we want to do a deep dive? I think my, my opinion is that we want to start laying the groundwork for the, uh, for spring of next year. Um.
Well, we know they're gonna want an update on the A D U by law. Because everybody's already wondering.
Oh, yeah, and I didn't mention anything about that today, so, or did I?
No, you did in the updates.
Yeah, so, um. Oh, that's right, I still have to, I, I have to set up a meeting with, um, the, the building department. Um, Al is out of town this week, but I was supposed to send Janine stuff, huh? Okay, send stuff to Janine. Sorry, Janine.
Okay, I would like to make a motion.
By all means, make a motion.
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, I thirded. Uh, roll call vote, please, Carrie.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
E Ching.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
I say I as well.
And Carrie, welcome.
Yes.
We're happy to be here, thank you.
So, thanks, thanks to, uh, Brian Mantor, our assistant town engineer who sticks with us for reasons we don't always understand.
Well, we certainly appreciate always.
Go take a nap, Brian.
And Nancy Polkari and Pam Court.
Yes, thanks to Nancy Polkari Recording Secretary, thanks to WinCam as always, thanks to Richard Leaf, our liaison from the Chamber of Commerce. Thanks to Richard Rohan, who shows up all the time. And Pamela, thanks for surrounding us, we will see you all in two weeks. Oh, thanks, everyone in TV land, talk to y'all later, bye.